Motion also to approve the executive session minutes from January 2013 as presented or amended.
I'm ready.
Mike?
Say.
Kathy?
Hi.
And we're going to go a little bit about order tonight. We have some students in the audience so that they're able to get back to their homes and do their homework and study. And so we're going to move to our principal reports and we'll start with the principal of our center school. Dr. Rex?
All right. Good evening and thank you for having me here to talk about the process that the preschool just completed for the NA EYC reaccreditation. I have no idea. Thank you. So, NA EYC, a lot of people are familiar with NA EYC, but there are many we found out there that still aren't. The NA EYC stands for the National Association for the Education of Young Children. And it's a private entity which private programs and public schools will pay fees in order to get the accreditation or work towards accreditation to show that a program is high quality and has high quality staff. It's dedicated to improving the well-being of all young children and the focus is on the quality of education and developmental services. There are goals with NA EYC that programs that are seeking accreditation have to adhere to and prove that they adhere to, which are improving professional practice and working conditions in early childhood education, supporting early childhood programs by working to achieve a high-quality system of early childhood education, and to build a high-performing inclusive organization of groups and individuals who are committed to promoting excellence in early childhood education for all young children. This is a four-step process which the enrollment and self-study, the first step in this started two years ago when the preschool was over at the Beaver Brook, which was formerly the EEC. And in the self-study, the programs have to apply. There is a fee. And what we do in there is we, it's almost a self-assessment, but the self-study is, consists of surveys from staff, surveys of parents and families, and then to look at all of the criteria and standards that is required by NA EYC. And there are over 400 sets of criteria, which I'll talk about as we go on. But we look at all the criteria and look at where we stand and how much work is needed or what we need to do to meet the criteria. And if we feel that we're ready and we have enough information, then you move on to the application and the self-assessment. The self-assessment phase is what is used during the candidacy portion. So in the self-assessment, that's where we collect family surveys and we collect surveys from all of the staff. And then we begin looking for sources of evidence to meet the four, over 400 standards and criteria that is encompassed in in NA EYC. Then, once we move out of that process, each one takes about a year. So self-study is about a year to complete. Then with the application self-assessment, again, that is about another year. And then you submit for candidacy. And when they look over your materials, there's, it used to be almost a hundred-page report. They've cut it down to about 50 pages. So once that's submitted, they look through our candidacy materials to determine if we are ready for the site visit and for the assessor to come out and visit the program. So that happened, by September 30th, we submitted our candidacy materials. And then we waited to hear from NA EYC to see if we were approved to move on to the next step, which is meeting the standards and the accreditation decision. So in that phase, an assessor comes out. They walk around the building. We have to take them on a tour. They have to look at the physical space. They measure the playground, the mulch. They look at all of the structures, climbing structures, and measure the height of the steps to make sure that they're appropriate and safe for the students. And then they, they walk around the building and observe classrooms. And they observe procedures and staff in those classrooms to make sure we're meeting the standards. Also, within that time, there's binders and portfolios that the teachers had done, as well as myself for the program. We can go to the next one. And in those binders and portfolios, here are the 10 areas that they look at. And within these 10 areas are those over 400 sets of criteria. They look at the relationships of the school and families and teachers and students, and then within staff. They look at the curriculum to make sure that it's a high-quality rigorous curriculum for the students. They look at teaching practices to make sure best practices are being used by all of the staff in the program. So the paraprofessionals, the therapists, and the teachers. They look at how we assess students and to make sure that we are assessing them yearly and to make sure that we use multiple assessment tools for these, for the children to make sure that we know that they're on target and developmentally progressing as they should be. They look at health. And right here is where it really gets into district-wide. We're lucky that we're a public school system going through this process because a lot of private schools don't have the policies and procedures in place that were needed to meet some of the standards here. So they look at controlling infectious disease, making sure we have procedures to ensure the safety and the health of all the students and the staff. They look at teachers and teachers' professional development and their professional responsibilities and their backgrounds. They look at the families and what we have available for families and how families are involved in the program. They look at community relationships and if we are involved in the community and if we're utilizing community resources to then share that with families and make sure that we're meeting the needs of all the families. They look at the physical environment, which I had said, so that includes the playground. It includes the size of the classroom. So for example, they measure the classroom to make sure there is 35, or 35 square feet of space per each child for play. So they went in and measured and we had to provide a map of the school with the dimensions of every single room that the children use, as well as the outdoor, the play area that they use there. And then they look at leadership and management, which again, this was also district-wide to ensure many procedures, right down to making sure there's liability insurance, making sure that our transportation is intact and everything that governs that. So they looked at every single little aspect that enables that program to run effectively. So in, how do they do that? They, they use the five sources of evidence. So within those 10 standards and all the criteria, they look at what's observable. There are some standards that there is multiple criteria. So it would be observable in the classroom portfolio or within the program portfolio. The teachers worked for about a year, pretty intensely. I, I don't even know the hours I want. I would guess maybe 30 hours it took each teacher to complete their, their binders. The program portfolio, I couldn't even guess how much time it took. Luckily, I've been through this a few other times before, so I knew exactly where to find the information. But we had to compile and label every single piece of evidence. And we needed a minimum of two pieces of evidence for each standard. So about 800 pieces of paper went into these portfolios and everything was labeled so that they could easily find it when they came. So then they looked at staff surveys. We needed 80% return on those staff surveys and 80% of yeses on any of the questions that, that were there. And then family surveys. And these are all anonymous. And what we did at the end of last year and then the beginning of this year is I had an information session. So if any families had questions about some of the questions and they weren't sure what the questions meant, I could direct them where to find the information within the district because there is a lot of information that families just are not aware that we do have policies and procedures in place for everything that's basically in the NA EYC criteria. So in order to pass, we needed to meet all of the required criteria, not all of the 400. What they do is their computers randomly select sets of criteria to look at and then they pull from the portfolios. So as I was saying, we needed about 800 sheets of paper or evidence for the standards total. They only looked at about 20. So kind of puts it in perspective how much work the teachers did to prove that they are high quality, to prove that we provide high-quality services. They only took a snapshot when they came. Then we needed to score an 80% or above on the assessed items in the documentation and then a 70% or above on classroom observations. So these were their findings. They came that day. We scored 100% in relationships. And again, that's relationships with families, relationships among the staff and with the students. Curriculum was 81%. And what they found there was that it was science and social studies. And the thing with NA EYC is we can't sit there and explain. I couldn't pinpoint, I couldn't show them our science and social studies and what we do. We just have to have faith that we have it all there and they will see it. So I think because we have the ELA, we have Storytown, and we have everyday math, she didn't see a boxed curriculum set for science and social studies. So I think she marked it down for that, not, not realizing that we consider curriculum, the frameworks, and then everything that we do to meet those frameworks is truly what curriculum is. Teaching was 100%, assessment 100%. For health, it was 83%. And again, we don't see specifically, we just see what specific standard they felt that we didn't have, you know, that was lacking some information. And they had said it was controlling infectious disease. And we can't write to them and ask what specifically they meant. So we're just left to, to take a guess at what, what they possibly were looking for. For teachers, it was 83%. And again, this was professional development, which was interesting because they had the professional development schedule. And again, it's left for us to guess what they might have been thinking or not thinking when they saw this. For families, 100% in community relationships. I liked this one. It was 100-plus percent. Physical environment, 95%. And that was because maybe the toilets and the bathrooms were a little bit higher than what they expected. And then typically in early childhood settings, the bathrooms are connected to the classrooms. So it makes it easier because we do have children still in diapers and they need to be changed. So things like that, you know, and the stairs are a little bit higher for them to navigate within the building itself. But still, a 95%, I'll take that. That was, I thought, great. And then leadership and management, again, I thought this was wonderful, 100-plus. So that's, that shows the district itself because a lot of the documentation there was district-wide materials and so Abington's doing a great job. So if we go to the next, that's it. So that's the process. It was pretty intense. It took up a lot of the time in the fall. The teachers did a great job. They, you know, the stress level was high, but they knew that they had to do this and they really wanted to put forth, you know, their best foot, which they do all the time anyway, and really wanted to make sure it shined the way that, that it does daily, you know, from what we see. So, so they did a great job.
Well, congratulations to you and all your staff.
Thank you.
How long is your, when will your accreditation be up?
It will be up in five years, January 1st, 2018. However, because of the state mandates and because of the Department of Early Education and Care, we will be moving into what's called the Quality Rating Improvement System. So we will no longer need to continue with NA EYC. In order to get funding, some of the funding that we have or we had in the past, NA EYC was required by the Department of Early Ed and Care. But now they want to take it on themselves, the licensing departments, and create QRIS. So now they're attaching grants to that. And you have to be at Level 2 or higher to get extra funding from the state or even to be involved in a lot of the programs they offer. And they don't require NA EYC anymore. They require, Massachusetts requires QRIS, which is still being rolled out. The first programs that started to pilot it two years ago are now coming up for their first assessment visits. So we should be at, I submitted the application Friday. So we should be at Level 2. In order to move to Level 3, I make a phone call to a woman up at the State Department. And then she schedules when to come out and assess. We have two years from last Friday to do this. So I think that I'll take that time since the teachers just went through this intense process because it is similar. There are standards that they have to meet. They did a crosswalk with the NA EYC standards so that it will be easy to pull the material we need. But, but I think just to give them a little bit of a breather, we don't need to hurry. But I did need to get it in because there will be grants this spring that will be available that will enable us to look at other resources. We might need to help us through that process.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you. Thank you.
And now we'll move on to our Frollo Middle School principal, Ms. Tarposka, and her students.
Good evening. The only thing I'm doing is introducing Mrs. Sandy DeCino. She's an eighth-grade science teacher at Frollo. And along with her comes a group of students that will share with you a variety of things that have happened at Frollo this year, including an important science lesson. Mrs. DeCino is presently in the National Science Teachers Association, Teachers Academy. Got it right? And, and she has been asked to publish this particular lesson. So we thought this might be a nice lesson for the students to share with you tonight.
Thank you for having us. And I would just, I don't want to do a lot of talking either because these students have, in a short time, pulled together and done such a, I'm so proud of them. They've done a great job. So I just wanted to introduce them. They did this all on their own. I just sort of did what they asked me to do. So this is Ben Duncan, Alyssa Buckley, Leah Alussy, Catherine Berry, Casey D'Angelo, and Katie Rust. And.
Cameron Woods.
Sorry. He's the main.
Computer guy.
Okay, so if you want to stand up here.
Thank you for inviting us to our, this meeting. It is important for us to have an opportunity to share the great things that we have done and will do in our school. We are very proud of our school. And as the peer leaders, members of student council, and the rest of the body, we are proud to present to you our social and academic efforts and we hope that you are as proud as we are.
Cleaning up Abington. The Frollo peer leaders have volunteered on an early Saturday morning to participate in cleanup Abington using rakes and eco-friendly bags to pick up litter and leaves to improve the community.
A handful of students stepped up to the plate after the tragedy at Sandy Hook Elementary School, making a giant poster to give them to show the support of Frollo. Every student and teacher signed the poster out of respect in our hearts. There was a quote said on the poster in the heart and Alyssa will tell you.
The quote stated, "If I could reach up and hold a star for every time you made me smile, the entire evening sky would be in the palm of my hand."
For the seventh grade orientation of 2012, the eighth grade class guided the incoming seventh graders through the basics of the school, being in fact, opening lockers, reading schedules, and getting together and getting around the school.
These are the pillars, these are the pillars of the Frollo school. So can I just read that first? Can you go to each one? I'm sorry. Okay, so I can do it. Effort makes a difference. This is important. Oh yeah, we won't give up on you. Yes. And Mr. Dorado made those, Ben his art club made those paintings for us to put on the wall.
Recently, Mrs. DeCino taught us about hereditary, how traits are passed from parent to offspring. As a part of a course, she presented the project to the NSTA and was asked to publish the project in their magazine. But to begin, we learned about DNA chromosomes, alleles, genotypes, and phenotypes. We practiced what we learned by creating our own pet creature. Using pennies to represent dominant and recessive alleles, we created offspring with homozygous and heterozygous traits. Finally, we made pundit squares and identified the probability of creating offspring with certain traits. We would like to congratulate Mrs. DeCino for being chosen to be a member of the National Science Teachers Association Teacher Academy. She is learning more about science by taking classes, participating in a variety of webinars, and developing a library of resources for her to use in her classroom. As her work, all of her work will pay off because the NSTA is sending her to the National Science Teachers Convention in San Antonio, Texas. Nice job, Mrs. D. Each year, the peer leaders wake up on a Saturday morning to distribute water to the participants of the Jeff Coombs Road Race in memory of Mr. Jeff Coombs. The money is, the money raised is used for many charities in Abington.
Cameron, you want to talk about this one?
At Frollo School, I think we're well around the community. We're all a bunch of friends and in the classroom, we have much fun learning the academics. And with the teachers especially, it's, puts us in a well, well-organized and a very fun environment to learn and succeed at Abington and Frollo. So we, you know, overall, the picture with the computer, if you could press the button, it's us making this prezzy. That's with the books on our head. We, Mrs. DeCino taught us as kids, she put books on her heads and said myosis, hoping the knowledge would go right to her head, but.
Osmosis.
Yeah. Yeah. Luckily, she did hit the book, so she produced us. So it was great.
Okay, the character education program we run in school and we have half-days. We take one kind of character, our responsibility, pers- perseverance. Yeah, honesty, integrity. And we work with our homerooms and we talk about them and we have discussion with them about having good characters. So all the kids are kind of into that. And we have a big poster above and it's, it's really good because it also gets the teachers to get to talk with their students about something to do with them personally. So it's a really good program.
For the Lee Denham Breast Cancer Awareness Month, we, students were asked to wear pink or red shirts and jeans every Friday to support the fighters of this disease. We have raised a total of $266.
The food drive. The student council sponsored a canned drive throughout the school. As a result, we collected 2,001 canned and dried goods.
And we kept track. It was a little competition.
Every year, Frollo Middle School has an open house. And at the beginning of every school year, peer leaders help teachers with the open house by directing parents to classrooms and handing out information.
Pennies for patients. Students at Frollo are currently collecting spare, spare change for cancer patients and we already have raised $500. We are still collecting pennies and having a little competition between homerooms. The student council also running a guess which baby picture goes with the teacher. Students pay 50 cents to take a guess and a bunch, a bunch of old pictures. All goes. It all goes to the same charity.
For the parent-teacher conferences, once a year, the peer leaders donate time to help at the parent-teacher conference. The students help the parents get into classrooms to, to avoid too much confusion.
Thank you very much for your presentation. That was great.
Thank you. Thank you.
And thank you for all your hard work you do at school, it seems. And congratulations to you.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
I'd just like to add, I'd just like to add that the prezzy presentation is a very new type of presentation that the students have learned. So this was an interesting approach. They chose something that they just learned, pretty much.
Yes, and I was hoping that they were teaching me too. So.
And then we'll share.
Yeah. I'd like to really thank these guys. I can't, I can't thank them enough. At the last, I asked them, this group, and they just jumped right in there. And we were at the school really late, was it just yesterday? And they were, they were having fun. And I kept saying, "Thank you guys so much for doing this." And they say, "That's all right. We love this. We like this." And the whole group of them, the same way. So I really, I really, really appreciate that. Thank you very much, guys. Proud of you.
Move on to Teresa Sullivan, the principal of Abington.
Just wanted to present the program of studies for next year and propose our four new courses. Three are ELA electives, journalism, media production, and scripts to screen. Fourth is our AP European History class. And also wanted to propose that we mentioned last month, the graduation requirement for four years of math for the class of 2016 and beyond.
How many sections of math do you need to add to get to that graduation requirement for four years?
We had 25 students that didn't make the graduation requirement last, last year. Not that it wasn't graduation requirement, wouldn't have made it if we, if we made the graduation requirement. So I think two sections, just because of the way our small schedule runs, to say one is going to fit 25 students is very unlikely. You know, we're driven by very small sections of an AP class or a band seventh period that dictates student schedules. I hope that two sections would do it. We'd know more as the years go on. Right now, you know, even if we didn't put it in this year, our freshmen, our sophomores are taking math. That, that's not the issue. It's the, so our current seniors, they, they are not in a fourth year of math. I want in the program of study, so our current freshmen and sophomores. I want in the program of studies so our current freshmen and sophomores are aware that this will happen and that we will provide, I mean, I suppose we could always go back and say we waive it. We can't budget it, we can't afford it. But I feel like it's appropriate to put it in there to say we expect that, we will be able to fund it, and that we will hopefully mandate a four-year graduation requirement.
So, the specific courses or the levels of the specific courses will be based upon the type of enrollment that you get for those?
It's most likely would be a quantitative literacy, a discrete math, adding another section, another, you know, level, perhaps. I don't think we'd propose a new course. It's more sections to satisfy all of those students. And, you know, we could squeeze some in here and there now, probably, but we haven't said they have to do that.
And that will be known that the students that are parents of a college, most of the colleges are going to be requiring that. For...
All Massachusetts public schools and universities entering college freshman 2016.
Correct.
Right.
And I think, I think I gave you the chart last month. The AP European History has been sort of a student draw, student interest. We think that we might be able to do that. I'd like to put it in the program of studies. The way this process works, I'm not sure, we didn't fund it for the coming year because we put our budget in in October. We're working on program of studies all fall. Just went to school council last week for a final okay. But if by any chance we could, we'd like to, but we can put it in the program of studies. How much is their interest there? Can we make this, if we have 12 students that sign up for it, we'd like to be able to provide it for them. And the college board requires a syllabus that the teacher has to put in, every single individual teacher. So, even if I change teachers in current AP class, they have to have their syllabus in by June 1st at the latest. So, it's important that we walk through these steps to get these things in the program of studies. There are things in the program of studies that we don't currently offer, but we've been able to say, if we do, if we can, if we can afford it, if students sign up for it, we'll be able to do that.
And by adding this AP, it would actually strengthen your AP?
Absolutely.
Course of studies, and hopefully an AP Biology class as well.
And AP Bio is in the program of studies. So, if we could fund it, we'd run it. And that's where I'd like to be with the social studies piece.
Doesn't it also lead, for example, the AP Bio, I think we've had this discussion, it's being able to get those 15, 18 kids at 6th period that are all free.
Mm-hmm.
We may have 18 kids that want it, are able to take it, you know, certainly can master it, but they may not all be free in 6th period.
True. Right. Everything else is really kind of editorial things Department Heads propose. Girls are winning 34-26 at the end of the third.
What's the score?
34-26. Oh, that's a new update, sorry. Should be over. Girls won. I don't know.
Oh, the girls won. Girls basketball, one. Then we'll look for a motion to approve the revisions to have a program of study for the 2013-14 school year as presented. Make that motion. Kathy?
Second.
Secretary of Vayelen.
Thank you.
Communications, I think that is we got any?
No.
Unfinished business? None. And we'll turn it over to Superintendent of Schools, Chief of State.
Under other matters, I've got a copy of what next year's calendar could potentially look like, not asking for your approval of this at this time, but just want to make sure that it gets a thorough read, because this has our professional development days, our half-days, the days that we would not have school all in one calendar. So, I'll answer any questions people might have. The one you have in your packet, please, if you would replace with this one, the difference is a coding of a half-day. The day, yeah, one of the days in the previous calendar was marked as a half-day, isn't it?
January 31st.
January 31st. So, I don't know if people have questions at this point, or if you want to hang onto it and come back with questions later, or if you have something to add.
We have one full day, as we have had in the past, and then eight half-days. So, you see, you know, that we have September 19th, October 11th, November 1st, December 5th, January 31st, February 7th, March 5th, April 2nd, and May 7th. And then our themes, which I do review every year so that you know what's going on, you know, for professional development in service programs, and then you've been receiving the constant contact that Superintendent's Office has been sending out to let families know what teachers are working on and staff members are working on during that time. But the common themes that you've been hearing about, we have many initiatives through the State Department, so we'll be focusing on the educator evaluation tool, the retail with the whole WEDA, and then Common Core, Park, Technology Department meetings, grade level meetings, data teams, et cetera, et cetera. So, any questions?
The next item I have is consideration for the Avenue of Public Schools' participation in school choice program. In order to do this, we're supposed to wait till 8 o'clock and have a public meeting. So, I'll have to wait for 8 o'clock and come back to it. So, I'll jump down to the third item under my section, and that is the presentation of my goals and objectives for this current school year. And I want to just preface it a little bit by talking about what Massachusetts is doing and how it's a pilot program this year for Abington, for most of the state. This is the new teacher evaluation tool and its application for Superintendent's Schools for me. And so, it's got several components, one of which is a self-reflective piece. And so, what I've done is I've put, I started your packet under this section with the information about the rubrics, those things that are the standards for the Superintendents of Schools in Massachusetts. And you can see, it's about a 20-page document. And what I've done is about three pages in, there is a page called Superintendent Rubric at a Glance. It's page III. And so, what it does is it summarizes the other 18, 19 pages and the 40 or so different standards that are being used as criteria to judge Superintendents in Massachusetts and their effectiveness. So, rather than focus on 42 different standards, in my reflective piece, what I tried to do is pick three to focus on that all of the other 40, 42 would tie into, so that I'd be able to pull evidence for all of these things, but focus on three in particular. And in the following pages, and what I'll describe to you is, what I picked was standard 1B1, Instructional Practices, 1E2, Data-Informed Decision Making for School and District Goals, and then under standard 4, Professional Culture, and that's 4A1, Commitment to High Standards. And so, this, the rest of this packet describes each and every standard, and what's unsatisfactory, needs improvement, proficient, and exemplary for each of those 40 different standards. So, again, thinking that these three will tie into those 40, and I'll be able to adequately demonstrate the 40 through these three critical focus areas. I just want to explain to you why those three are, in my mind, the most important ones. 1B1, Instruction Indicator for Instructional Practices. The indicator is, while observing principles, principles practice in artifacts ensures that the principles know and employ effective strategies and practices for helping educators improve instructional practice, and is able to model this element. So, thinking here that this is done well, this improves teaching and learning across the district, and what's most important is the achievement of our students, and this would be tremendously beneficial. Exemplary work in this area translates into better achievement for our students. And that's why, actually, I picked all three of these. IE2, Data-Informed Decision Making Indicator, School and District Goals, involves stakeholders in comprehensive diagnosis of school and district strengths and weaknesses using appropriate data, and leads a collaborative process to develop a focused, results-oriented strategic plan with annual goals, is able to model this element. Again, by using data and using data to inform decisions, we're focusing on the areas of greatest need and focusing on improving those areas of greatest need. And then 4A1, Commitment to High Standards, leads administrators in developing a shared commitment to high standards of teaching and learning with high expectations for achievement for all, revisits and renews this commitment with the administrative team regularly, and is able to model this element. Again, this is another one that I, that clearly will be able to hit all of the 40 other elements here, because high standards, and what is occurring in Abington in the daily operation affects all of those other elements in the rubric. The next step was, I need to develop SMART goals. And so, what you'll see in the next piece here is the Avenue of Public Schools' Educator Plan for 2012-13, and this is a pilot, because again, this year is a test for us. And under educator goals...
Can I interrupt for one second, just for the people that may not know? Can you tell them what a SMART goal is, what it actually?
Yep. SMART goal stands for a goal that's strategic, measurable, action-oriented, rigorous, and it's a time, there's a timeline to it so that it's got to be completed by a certain amount of time. And I appreciate the question, because we're going to be doing a lot of work with SMART goals throughout the Avenue of Public Schools. Massachusetts is doing this work with SMART goals, so that we are most effective in terms of teaching and learning, and again, focusing on student achievement. And so, building off of that good question, I'm going to, what I tried to do here was a couple of things. With the administrative team, which I really appreciate their input, we did some work on, at the same time blended what I need to do as a professional with what Abington needs to do, and we went through a process of creating a strategic plan. These goals are supposed to be strategic, and off of these strategic plans, we build school improvement plans, district improvement plans, individual SMART goals for employees in the Avenue of Public Schools, so that everything stays aligned, and we're all moving in the right direction, and we don't have different parts going off with effort that isn't strategic and effective. So, what I tried to do is, this is not a cut-and-paste job of the strategic plan. This was a thoughtful process, and if you take a look at this, it is aligned with the strategic plan, but it's different than the strategic plan. And again, as I described earlier, hopefully, this will mean that principals, central office, individual buildings in terms of improvement plans, and the entire district will be aligned, and I will be aligned with our strategic plan, which was not crafted by one person in isolation, but by a broad committee of teachers, parents, community representation that focused our district on what we want and need to do. So, my first goal under student achievement for teaching and learning is, again, is, as it says here, aligned with Division 2020. And during the 2012-13 school year, through collaborative educational leadership at the district level, and ongoing implementation of best practice, teaching and learning strategies, integration of 21st century skills, and the implementation of an innovative and challenging standards-based curriculum in a physically, socially, and emotionally safe and healthy learning environment, student academic improvement as measured by the medium growth percentile, the MSGP, will be at or above 51% for English Language Arts, Mathematics, and Science as measured by the MCAS test for students in the aggregate. That entire statement, which is a mouthful, is a SMART goal, because it is strategic, measurable, action-oriented, it's rigorous, and there's a timeline to it. And then under professional practice, the goal is during the 2012-2013 school year, through the collaborative and ongoing meetings of professional development offered by Teachers 21, the Avenue of Public Schools, the administrative team, the Joint Evaluation Committee, Curriculum Planning and Professional Development Council members, 100% of the faculty will demonstrate their understanding of the new Massachusetts model for evaluation, as evidenced by exemplars and products produced during professional development. All faculty will use their individual proficiency rubric to draft sample SMART goals. Members of the administrative team and interested faculty will pilot the classroom walkthrough system. So, if we're going to implement this new evaluation tool, which is very different and very new for Massachusetts, we're going to start doing it this year, and this speaks to the pilot of that, the getting of information about that, and then something that's documented and something we can demonstrate that the people who do work in this area are going to make progress toward it this year. And if these SMART goals, which I've described what SMART goal is, are done the right way, the feeling and the thought in Massachusetts is there's nothing else that we can do that would be more beneficial for the achievement of our students than implementing this with fidelity and doing this the right way. Because this will bring all of the different initiatives that we're describing together in one process. Dr. Thomas just outlined five different initiatives off the top of her head that professional development is going to be centered around next year. And these SMART goals will be tied to that professional development, to professional growth, and again, student achievement. And I promise not to bore you to death, because it's a terrible death, and read the entire document to you, but as you progress through it, you can see, there's an action, there's a timeline of frequency, and there's identified resources and support. About aligning school improvement plans, broadly distributing those, rigorous and relevant curriculum, analyzing student performance data, committing time and resources for meaningful collaboration with high-quality professional development. And then under each of those, there's another subset of objectives, multiple objectives in terms of how to do that, and again, the timeline or frequency, and the resources or support. And then the same thing occurs for that second professional practice goal that you saw around the implementation of the new teacher evaluation tool. So, am I answering any questions?
I have a couple.
The other component of the new evaluation system is that it creates an objectivity to evaluation, which puts a little extra work on us as well. Because in order for us to evaluate this year, we need to review all of the evidence of all of this that you've laid out. Have you thought of a process that's going to be used that each of us will see the evidence in order to complete the evaluation?
For every one of these 40, as I went through this, thank you, as I went through this, every one of these 40 different elements, as I thought about each one, I said to myself, "Oh, I've got a piece of paper that talks about how this occurred," so that I can use those, whether it's electronic or whether it's a piece of paper, and then file them so that I've got both a paper and electronic record of these as we move forward. So, even as we do the action planning around the strategic plan, and we're able to bring those things, those elements of that strategic plan to you, you know, each of those things that are completed has something that's occurred as a result of it being in the strategic plan, so those things are just going to be collected. What's difficult about this process in Massachusetts in this first year, and that question leads me to this, and I wanted to make sure I mentioned this, is that there's a timeline for this. And for example, one of the things I say here is that the medium growth percentile is going to be X, well, 51%. Well, the state doesn't provide that to us until the following year at this point. So, all school systems have that same problem right now. So, this process is supposed to be completed in a year, but it's based on something that isn't going to be available until the beginning of the following year. As the state shifts to Park, there will be data that's available at the end of each school year for Massachusetts, but that's just an inherent problem in the Massachusetts system that I wanted to point out as we do this. It doesn't mean, I don't think we shouldn't move forward and do our best work on this and because it's going to work itself out in Massachusetts, but we don't... and because it's going to work itself out in Massachusetts, but we don't own that problem. That's a testing timeline problem that we all have that the state of Massachusetts has.
Okay. I'll take Kathy. Question. For one of the measures was that we will be at 51% or above in ELA math and science for the MCAS. Where are we now? So if we're to go to 51, what type of increase are we looking at?
Each year is different. What that means is that you are progressing and achieving better and faster than the majority of districts in the state of Massachusetts. This year, depending on the grade level, we had a range. We were anywhere from 46 to 56% across the district, and we hover just below, just at, or just above 51% depending on which group of pupils we're talking about. As we saw from the MCAS presentations at the last school committee meeting, generally speaking, our students come to us below and progress below, and then as they move through the system, they're longer, they are in Abington. If there's no or very little transitioning between communities, those students end up achieving above what occurs across the state, and they do quite well. It's those students that migrate in and out of towns and in and out of districts that struggle the most.
And then the second professional practice, when we talk about the members of the administrative team and interested faculty will pilot the classroom walkthrough, two things on that. Interested, so not all faculty will be participating, just everyone's going to be moving towards this, but faculty that are looking to, I guess, get a jump on it would be the ones participating.
Everyone's going to be working on SMART goals in professional development and learning about the new tool. And so we've already done a professional development day with the administrative team, which was outstanding. We did it ourselves, and I'm very proud of the work that was done that day. And we actually videotaped it, it's available, there's a digital recording. You probably have other things to watch, but it was that good, it was pretty good. Anyway, so everybody's going to be working on it, but in terms of the classroom walkthroughs, we are still required to use the previous evaluation tool for all of our employees contractually. So the tough part about this is, and I give the credit to our building principals, is they're doing both. They're doing all of the old evaluations plus what they're trying to do is use this walkthrough system with those people that are willing to do it with them. We couldn't do it with everybody and still use, it's just so incredibly cumbersome just to do the new piece. So there are alternative evaluation opportunities with our staff. So if you're on a, every two years, you're evaluated in the classroom, every year you get an evaluation. Every two years is a classroom observation, and the off-year, you can pick a project to work on and set goals where you're evaluated. What our administrators are doing is they're using those people that are in that year where it's a goal-oriented evaluation, where the goal is to be observed using the new evaluation tool. And so those are the people that are doing it across the district.
And that was my second question, which I think you answered. The classroom walkthrough system is the new evaluation system that the principals will be, are using, piloting in some places.
Right, that's a part of, great question. That's a part of this new tool. The other part are these SMART goals, collective evidence, the way that Kathy asked, and documenting these standards.
Any questions?
I have my question, so.
Yes. If there are no questions, we'll motion to approve the superintendent of School's objectives as presented or amended.
I'll make it.
Mike.
Yeah. Second.
Alan, second.
Under dates to remember, Friday, February 1st is an in-service day, a half-day. Tuesday, February 5th, Green Wave Booster Meeting at Avenue High School at 7:00 PM. Wednesday, February 6th, we're having the Finance Committee tours at our buildings at 8:00 AM. Just want to highlight that for people. We'll be, and I appreciate that the Finance Committee is willing to spend this time with us, we're going to tour the district and all of the buildings with interested members of the Finance Committee, certainly want our school committee members to know about that, you're more than welcome to attend. Kicking the tires is important as we deliberate over the budget and so that they have an opportunity to see what we're talking about rather than just hear about it in a PowerPoint presentation at a school committee. So I appreciate that they'll spend that time with us. Tuesday, February 12th, the Avenue Music Parents Meeting at Avenue High School at 7:00 PM. Monday, February 18th through the 22nd is the winter break. Monday, February 18th is President's Day, all school offices and buildings are closed. Tuesday, February 26th is the next regularly scheduled school committee meeting, and then Saturday, March 9th, is a business and finance subcommittee meeting at the North School. That's a Saturday meeting where we walk through the entire budget from beginning to end. The benefit of doing this full session that takes quite a bit of time is that it's a big budget, line by line, item by item, pencil by pencil, dollar for dollar, and people can see all of the moving parts in one session rather than having multiple meetings with multiple people that come and go who miss different pieces of things and don't have a thorough and comprehensive read of the budget.
Okay. We have to move into open session at 8:00, correct?
Do you want to try to do something?
Okay, why don't we, we'll go, we'll skip to the reported assistance superintendent for people personnel.
Great, thank you. I just wanted to give you a report on the ELL corrective action report. I was hoping that tonight I'd be able to tell you that what we had submitted was approved, but we haven't heard anything back yet. I didn't talk with the state, they're just really far behind. So they don't anticipate that they'll have that information back to us for a few months, but because I regurgitated back to them the changes that they want, I'm assuming that we're going to have approval. The piece that I keep bringing up, and I know you've been hearing me talk about English Language Learners over and over almost every month, is that our numbers are growing in this community and so that we may be coming forward again with asking for an increase in teaching staff because the level of need of the children depends upon how much staff we need. Because they all come in either Level 1 to Level 5, and that determines how many hours, according to regulation, that children need at any level. And where we're seeing the two teachers currently who do not work full-time, there's part-time pieces and they're contractors of the North River Collaborative, they're really struggling meeting the needs of our high school kids in particular, who move into Abington midway through the year and they're in high school programs and also trying to learn the English language and learning the subject matter. So that's something that I know I keep talking about, but that is a rise for us here in Abington, and it's been rising, and we've been increasing it, but it continues to increase. So just something for you to expect us to be having discussions about in the future. Secondly, the indicators for data collection, as you know, the state, every month we're putting in information at the state with special education. However, Indicator 12 and Indicator 13 are areas that Dr. Rich is actually working on Indicator 12, which is the preschool transition, children going from EI early intervention into public schools at age three, you've heard me talk about this before. So she'll be taking that documentation and submitting it by April. And then we also just received information back on our Indicator 13 that we were in full compliance with transition protocols for students aged 16 to 22. So that's good news for us. So I just wanted to let you know about that. The next piece is that we did an internal audit of our technology standards so that our curriculum council, our administrative team are taking a look at the technology standards and then trying to determine what our PD professional development needs will be in terms of moving forward and then focus areas after school, in-service days, et cetera. That would be under the direction of Aaron Hyer, our director. So you've had those as well in your packets. And then just to update you on the professional development components, we had a successful day on January 18th, so that big focus was on our data teaming, our curriculum pacing, and our common assessments, as well as department meetings. And at the high school, they also had a presentation by Dr. Kent on concussion management, which I know Peter did attend that, and it was very well received from Dr. Kent, so.
The information that they have today on concussions is amazing compared to what it was 10 years ago and how people need to be aware that students should not and cannot play sports when there is even a suspicion of a concussion because of the damage it can do to a brain.
And it's good for our staff to know because not only is it a medical piece, but it also impacts teaching and learning. So if there's something going on with a child's brain and because of a concussion, you know, there are different colors and green and red and yellow, et cetera, but you also need to know, you know, how much can you do with that child regarding expectations for learning? So that's something that the Frollo, some of the Frollo staff attended as well as all of the high school. And then this week, we have one coming up, and that's really going to be a push focusing on our new teacher evaluation system follow-ups, and then also school-based meetings, et cetera. So that'll also be taking place this week. So it's a little bit about the professional development. And then the last piece is I just am requesting a motion to approve the homeschool. We have two more students for homeschool requests, they have submitted all their paperwork. Actually, we had one submit today, that's why you're receiving an updated piece of paper. So we have one at the ninth grade level and one at the eighth grade level who has submitted the homeschool packets. So we are up to 24, which is pretty large, and that's our largest number that we've ever had in Abington since I've been here. And basically, we're following the process through the regulations through the State Department, and I know I've talked to you about this before, every beginning of the year, we go through it, we really have a big bunch because that's when everyone's submitting most of the information. But then as the year progresses, families decide that they want to do that, and again, they follow the procedures, following the paperwork, filling out the paperwork, and then getting approval through the school department and then going from there. And they talk a lot with our guidance departments too, as well as people at the building level. So we try to, you know, always keep kids within our own system because sometimes families struggle sometimes when they realize, oh, I didn't know how much work it was going to be to homeschool, and then they come back. But there's missed time, and that sometimes impacts especially at the high school level, that impacts their credits. So those are real conversations that we have with people. But overall, we have some families that really enjoy doing homeschooling, and we have more that are continuing to do that. So I just need approval for the new, which is one in ninth and one in eighth.
Okay. Looking for any questions for Felicia, for that motion? Motion to approve the additional home education program for the 2012-13 school year as recommended by Dick Thomas.
Make the motion.
Making the motion, seconded, Kathy. Viva.
Thank you.
It's now 8 o'clock.
So what I'll need to ask from the committee is if someone would make a motion to go out of the regular session and go into the public session for the purpose of discussing school choice.
Second.
And then, so now we're in public session, and then just, I'll make a very brief, just, I'll give you a very brief overview just for the benefit of people that are watching on cable because as you know, we talked about this last month, and this is not new for Abington. What I am recommending to you is that we allow for the application of up to five ninth graders at Abington High School from other towns to attend and have their educational needs provided by Abington High School. Their parents would be required to provide transportation to them, and then we would keep them with us through their senior year till they graduate unless they decide to leave on their own accord. We do not have room to do this at any other grade levels in Abington, but, you know, our students in Abington go to the best colleges in the country, and this may be something that's very appealing to some families. We currently have two students involved in this program now at Abington High School.
So we're looking for freshmen's, ninth grade would be next year, and when you say that, students have to start in September, they can't come in January, correct?
Correct. We, not mid-year placements, this is beginning of the year placements where we can own the transition and the orientation and get them acclimated to the school because they'll be coming from a different town, and that's the best way to make sure, I mean, we're responsible for their success, and that's the best way to ensure their success, to get them started the right way and have them and own them for four years. They become part of the life of the high school. They are our students.
What is the deadline to apply for September of 13, or August of 13 to start? I would assume that it would be before?
June 3rd, Monday, June 3rd, 2013. All of the information's available to people online, and they would make application, and then they get a tour of the high school, they meet with Terry Sullivan at the high school, and, you know, we work to get them acclimated so they can be successful. And I hope that all the other towns around us send us their class valedictorians.
We have our own.
I know.
Any questions?
No.
So we're looking for a motion to approve, oh, no, sorry, motion to, where?
Oh, I'm sorry, we have to take the vote in, we have to have this session in public, in a public session, and we have to take the vote in the regular session. Thank you, Teresa. So we need a motion to go back into the regular session, and then we'll take the vote.
I'll make the motion to leave public session to go back into the regular session.
Oh, second.
Viva?
I promise we don't make up the rules or sit around thinking of things to make you crazy, we're just trying to follow the rules. So now I'll be looking for, asking for a motion to be provided to allow for the, I guess what is it, opting out of school choice for all of the grades and accepting five students at grade nine.
I'll make that motion. Now, we'll hear a report of our subcommittees, North River Collaborative, 2012 Annual Report and Update from Kathy Daly.
Well, I'm going to start off with the Executive Director's quarterly report. By law, we're required to make a report to this committee on what's happening at the North River Collaborative. It's time for another quarterly report. Basically, what we're looking at is the goals from the strategic plan and the progress that's being made in that area. Goal number one was to provide a continuum of high-quality, technology-enhanced educational programs and services. And currently, professional development is being provided both for district staff and North River Collaborative staff, and I know Abington people are involved in many of these programs. Work on keys to literacy, data coach training, instructional technology integration. As part of the annual report that everyone has a copy of, which is a large, lovely document, you can see a detailed description of North River Collaborative's programs and services. Currently, they're reviewing existing technology needs for the North River Collaborative programs and creating plans of purchasing needed technology. Teachers and administrators are aligning the North River Collaborative curriculum with the Massachusetts curriculum frameworks and the Common Core, and particularly is tied to college and career readiness standards and to transition to adulthood. Many of the students in their program does a lot of work involved in the transition. Teachers and administrators reviewing, North River Collaborative's practices regarding assessment and progress monitoring, with the goal of developing assessment systems for the collaborative students, which is, in many cases, very different from what we see here in public school. Program evaluation of learning centers for students with multiple disabilities to be completed and presented, specialty is advisory committees, superintendent's advisory committee, and the board of directors. They're also, as we just spent some time looking at the evaluation system, they're working on the educator evaluation system. They've provided administrative seminar for over 70 districts in North River Collaborative administrators in the implementation of the new educator evaluation system. They're piloting the educator evaluation system with North River Collaborative administration, and we've been working on that with the executive director and her evaluation. They're working with North River Collaborative Committee of Staff and Administrators to recommend a system for the North River Collaborative educator evaluation. a system for the North River Collaborative educator evaluation, which has to follow the same new evaluation guidelines as the rest of the state. Provide professional development for districts and NRC specialized instructional support personnel to support the implementation of educator evaluation. Goal number two is to leverage existing, emerging, and innovating technologies to meet the needs of NRC and the districts it serves, and they're contracted with its learning for technology platforms and development of common curriculum instruction and assessment across the collaborative district, which really sounds like it will be an exciting component to have. As an educator, it would have been nice to be able to plug into something like that when I was teaching. And they've developed a proposal for implementing, implementation of its, of its learning to provide a variety of approaches. So that's something that's ongoing. Our goal three to develop, support, and sustain a high-quality, effective staff, faculty, and administration. They're working with North River Collaborative Committee of Staff and Administrators to recommend a system for NRC educator evaluation. They've created an educator evaluation handbook for administrators, and they're piloting the educator evaluation system of the administrators. Goal four to ensure the financial stability necessary for the continued development and expansion of programs, services, facilities, and resources. The board of directors has set aside fifty thousand dollars toward the building fund and has set aside sixty-five thousand dollars toward the operating reserve fund in order to keep programs going. Program enrollment, students in North River Collaborative programs with multiple disabilities, there are eighteen point one autism and developmental disabilities, twenty-four point two, that doesn't mean there's two tenths of a student. Emotional disabilities, forty-six point four, substance abuse and dependence, sixteen. Serving in, students served in NRC services, community-based vocational, eighty-four. English language learners, sixty-eight, which is a program that for them has been increasing as well. Therapies, seven hundred and twenty-nine. Social work interns, one hundred and sixty-five. Transportation, three hundred and fifteen. Physical education, the STRIDE grant, five thousand five hundred. PE STRIDE before and after school, one thousand three hundred and fifty. And I believe the STRIDE, STRIDE grant is the last year of that, so. Fiscal update, independent audit was completed with no findings. In other words, it worked well. Student enrollment is currently anticipated to be at the levels predicted in FY13 budget figures, which is really important for the collaborative because it's a different financial structure that they work on. And if they don't meet the projected enrollment, it means that the education of each child could become more expensive, and we don't want that to happen. Because we have a lot of students that use their services. Legislation, new collaborative legislation is being implemented. My report to you is one of the pieces of that new legislation. We've also, North River Collaborative has also appointed a new treasurer, which is another part of the new legislation. A draft of revised collaborative agreement is prepared and is pending any additional regulatory changes from DESE, because changes have been coming along. We've looked at two agreements already with additions being added. And the appointment of a board member by the DESE is pending at this time. DESE is supposed to have a board member on collaborative boards. And if there are any questions?
Kathy, the substance abuse, that's the Independence Academy in Rockton?
Rockton, yes.
And there was sixteen?
Yes.
Sixteen, all students?
Yeah, we have two.
And that's been open, what, almost a year or just about a year?
Just about a year.
And those are, those are from, that can be students that are member districts and then districts that are not member districts of North River Collaborative.
Thank you, Kathy, for your time. We'll have now the report of the assistant superintendent for business and finance.
Thank you. My first is a review of the facility's goal action plan. Again, this is one of the strategic action goals that we developed as part of the strategic action planning last year. This is our first report of status for this. The first strategic goal is to provide state-of-the-art facilities, and the first objective is to secure the necessary votes to support the renovation, expansion, and our construction of school facilities. So that's not an objective that we would complete at this time because we're, we're in a process. Some of the action steps, or there are two action steps. One is communication of, of need utilized through the media, community, organizations, PTO, email, school council, et cetera. We do have an Abington School Building Committee, and they actually have a subcommittee that's been meeting on communication and, and how to get information out into the community, excuse me. Dixon got me sick. We have a, and there is a school building committee website that is... And they'll be, that'll be updated regularly with, with information as we go through the feasibility study process. And included in that is the frequently asked questions document that, and there's also a link on that website that if you have specific questions that you would like to have asked, answered, please email via that link or email any one of us, and we'll get those questions answered and those answers up until the website. If you have that question, it's probably a question that many other people have as well. The second objective is to present and submit required MSBA, Master Building Authority application, and have them accepted and funded by the MSBA. The first action step is to form a permanent building committee, which we have done, and that has been accepted by the MSBA. We've talked about that before. Conduct, present, and have approved by the town and the MSBA a feasibility study, and we're in process for that right now. It's probably a good time to just give a little bit of an update on that feasibility study. Last week, actually, we were at the School Building Authority for interviews with designers or architects to work with us to complete the feasibility study. And there's a, it was a fifteen-member board, it's called the Designer Selection Board, fifteen members, three of which were from our building committee, the rest were selected by the MSBA. We had interviews of three firms that had submitted to us, and we then, they had an interview, they did a presentation question, and then a vote. And in the end, we have engaged the services of AI Three Architects to work with KBA, our owner's project manager, and the school SBA, the school building, or SBC, the school building committee, to complete the feasibility study. So I'm sure they'll be presenting and being introduced to, to the school committee as well as the board of selectmen and, and other groups in town, and you'll be hearing a lot more about the feasibility study in the coming meetings. Number three of the strategic objective is to begin work on MSBA and town-funded projects as soon as possible, secure votes and monies needed, project approval via the feasibility study. So we're not, we're not there yet, but so that'll be, that'll come later on, and I'll be looking for about a, a good year of, of study with the architect and the town of Abington.
Is that typical timeframe?
Yeah.
When will we be able to present this to the town?
We actually met this morning looking at some calendar dates, and it'll, we'll have, it'll be a decision with the school building committee, but one of the things that was very rung very clear, especially with AI Three in the interviews, is if people are asking questions about a project on town meeting floor, it's too late. We need to get information out to people, be talking to different groups, be answering questions, have the proposal, the preferred solution, if you will, to the problem out into the community so that people can really ask questions, we can get answers out there. So we're probably, we're, we'll either be looking, again, this is not my decision, this will be the school building committee and how the feasibility study goes, and, but either spring or fall of two thousand and fourteen would be when we would be looking for a town meeting.
One of the, one of the reasons that we're not sure which it would be is obviously it's the school building committee's decision, which it would be, and, and they haven't deliberated on it, but one of the things that'll weigh into that is how much research needs to be done at how many different sites. So if the Abington School Building Committee, when we meet, decides to focus in, for example, on the area around Abington High School, that's one site, and then you're studying that one site rather than looking at three or four different parts across town, which take more time because you have to be thorough and thoughtful about that process at different sites. You don't want to run into rock ledge, you don't want to get approved and then run into rock ledge two months into a project and find out that you don't have, you didn't budget appropriately or have surprises.
But I think to your point, Mike, I think it's, it's very important, and that's, I think, why there's a subcommittee of the school building committee of communication is to, there's no secrets. This is an open process. This is a process that we want to engage as many people in the community around finding the most educationally appropriate, fiscally responsible solution to our problem. Last one is to continue to avail ourselves of alternative funding sources for maintenance and upgrades of school facilities. We've been very lucky that the AEF and the PTOs have continued to fund our technology needs around interactive whiteboards, and we continue with that, and we're very thankful for that. Along with the town of Abington and National Grid, we're continuing our lighting upgrades in all of our schools. We'll be doing a lot of work over February vacation, and it's actually reimbursed at ninety percent, and the town is, is actually paying for the ten percent of the, of the project. And one of the other things that we do is, is just an example, is that we are, work with the town health department in paint exchange, and we get latex paint for free, actually, from a, a paint exchange in, in Situate. And last year, actually, we were able to procure, well, call them gently-used classroom and office furniture from a neighboring town that has just completed a large construction and renovation project, and we were able to get much-needed classroom desks and chairs well below retail costs and, and well below, and in very good condition.
I think we bought, I'll just say it, I think we bought Rockland's desks.
We absolutely bought.
For about five dollars a desk.
Correct. Rockland Middle School's desks.
And what would they have cost us?
Seventy-five, something dollars.
I was gonna guess sixty-five, yeah, up.
So that's, the facility's actual goal.
Looking for a motion, motion to, looking for a motion to approve the facility's goal action plan as presented or amended.
Make that motion.
Kathy?
One second.
Mike, on favor?
I would also like your approval to submit for a town meeting, an article to, to establish a revolving account for the purpose of collection of school choice funds. And there'll be some language around that that'll be specific.
And since we just approved to have school choice, I think that's easy. Motion to submit for the annual town meeting warrant and article seeking a revolving account for school choice. Kathy? Ellen? Favor?
And the last item is a surplus, requesting surplus of some equipment that's in the North School parking lot, uh, well, yes, actually, it is in the North School parking lot and the playground. We, as you know, in North, in the front of North School, there's some playground equipment that's no longer used as part of North School. There's no children that are in regular attendance at North School, and the equipment is, is falling into disrepair.
No children of the age where that equipment can be used?
No Abington Public Schools children, and there are North River Collaborative parent groups with very, very young children. And the equipment that is there is a very, very high slide, swings, and monkey bars.
It's meant for three, grades three through six, and we have three-year-olds at the building now.
We've, and then the, the last item are basketball poles that are located in the, in the, what is now parking lot. We've, we've consulted with our playground inspector, and we've also asked other schools if they're, if they're...
We actually do have a person, we have to inspect playgrounds.
And, and his recommendation was to not move the equipment to any other school, that it was beyond its kind of, its usable life. We've talked with the highway department, and they will help us to remove the equipment.
This goes along with what we talked about previously about removing that fence around the North School, and I'd like to, I'd like to mention here and be as public about it as possible. We've sent letters to the youth sports groups about this, and we park and rec about this. We're saying here on cable because the fence is, is rusty and old, and the cost to replace the fence is tens of, tens of thousands of dollars. I think it was forty, thirty-five, forty thousand dollars to replace the fence. Repairing the fence is not an option either because, because that's also expensive.
It costs thirty, forty thousand dollars.
And so the best option is the removal of the fence altogether. So what we would want to do is we'll be removing the playground equipment first, and then the highway department has told us they'll help us remove the fence, and that's a couple of thousand dollars to remove the fence. And then, yes, the metal that can be sold as scrap will help to fray the cost. We will, that's what will happen with that metal.
Okay. Questions? Playground?
We're very green in Abington.
We're recycling everything.
So we're looking for a motion to declare the playground equipment at the North Elementary School as surplus as presented.
I'll make the motion.
Mike, seconded by Ellen. On favor?
We'll also just remind you, since we're talking about recycling, that we have textile recycling bins in each of the parking lots of the Woodsdale High School, Beaverbrook Center, and North School. As you're cleaning out your winter clothes from your closets or throwing out sheets or blankets or socks or shoes, please remember our recycling bins. The proceeds will then go to the school PTOs.
And what about, what we had spoke about the other day, the one at the North will...
The one at the North School will go to the, those ones will go to the Frollo PTO because the Frollo doesn't have a bin in their parking lot because it's so small.
Also will benefit. And the items don't need to be cleaned? They can be used?
They do not need to be, well, no, they do not need to be cleaned.
New, on to new business establishing next school committee meeting dates. We have February twenty-sixth, town hall seven p.m., and March twenty-sixth, also with town hall at seven p.m. Anything else?
Under information, just two quick things.
Yep.
Sorry. Under information, I just want to congratulate and highlight Sarah Laborio. Congratulations on a recent publication of digital art to The Marble Collection. It's an online magazine. It's, it's a pretty impressive magazine, and this is a letter that Terry sent to her acknowledging that. And then also, congratulations to the students at the Woodsdale School and their efforts around Hoops for Heart. They raised five thousand five hundred and twelve dollars with Chris Turner, the P.E. teacher there. And Woodsdale placed third among the participating Division Two schools in Massachusetts, and was recognized for its top participation and support of out of four hundred and thirty-seven other schools in the state. The money goes to the American Heart Association for research and awareness around heart disease.
Congratulations, Phil. Okay. Approval account, we're looking for a motion to prove all accounts as presented. Kathy? Seconded by Ellen. On favor?
Yep.
We'll move to a tournament. Thank you, everyone. Thank you, everyone.